The Board will now come to order. Mr. Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Coder, Alderwoman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Volmer, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Bacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Navarro, President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Martin, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn. You have sixteen, President. Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Reverend John Watson, Jr., from Maple Temple.
We all stand for prayer. Before we begin, we want to take a moment of silence to our own President of the Board of Aldermen, mother-in-law Clara Entrup, who was recently passed away and memorialized. We'd like to take a moment of silence in memory of her. Gracious God, heavenly Father, we come in prayer. We're lifting our minds and our hearts unto you and to your holy presence. As we begin this Aldermanic session, assure us that you're with us and that we have a real place in your heart and in your endeavor to bring righteousness, peace, and goodwill to our city. We're aware that we're imperfect and have offended you in some way, yet we believe that you're with us, loving us with a love that never let us go and never let us down. In your love we live, by your love we learn, and through your love we find light for our day. Allow us to be our loving best as we face the task of this day and session. Into your arms we commit our families, our city, our community. Amen.
I want to thank Reverend Watson for that moment of silence for my mother-in-law. She was a great woman. She will be missed. A birth to ten kids, and it's been tough on the whole family, but I'm so appreciative of the moment of silence that all of you participated in today. I want to just say thank you for that. We will dispense with our regular order of business, take by our Courtesy Resolutions Calendar. Move for adoption of Courtesy Resolution Calendar. I entertain a second on it. Move by Alderman from the twenty-second, seconded by the Alderman from the twenty-sixth. Alderwoman from the fourteenth, like to approach the dais.
Good morning, esteemed colleagues and President Reed. I'd like to recognize today Patrice Crati. If she would please come up to the dais. Come on. Come on up. Today we recognize Patrice as a community leader and community organizer. Patrice worked and still works for St. Louis Public Schools. She's retiring today. Today is her last day to work for St. Louis Public Schools. After 24 years of service, she worked as a community school organizer. Most notably, my experience with her was with Long Community School, of which I have a long connection as a parent and community member. When I first took office, Patrice was very, very helpful to me in organizing community events. She helped organize what is now called the Better Bebo Now organization, which has been sustained for probably over eight years now. She was instrumental in founding that and lending her support with organizing and using her resources and her people to found this and give some attention of the people and some power to the people in the Bebo area. So I'm forever grateful to her, and as we recognize her today, I'm going to read this resolution, because this is how we're going to memorialize her efforts for the St. Louis community in our annals of the Board of Aldermen here. Patrice Crati was born and raised in Akamogee, Oklahoma. She received her bachelor's degree in youth ministry from Benedictine College at Atchison, Kansas. After graduating, Patrice moved back to Oklahoma where she served as a youth minister, residential counselor, and juvenile for juvenile delinquents, and a caseworker for the Division of Family Services. And in 1990, Patrice moved to St. Louis to pursue her master's degree in social work from St. Louis University. Since arriving in St. Louis, Patrice has focused on improving her community and the lives of underserved children and families. As a student intern, she worked with the Hamilton Heights neighborhood to increase voting through the Voter Education Project. And after receiving her master's degree, Patrice worked as a neighborhood development specialist to beautify the community and create new activities for youth in the Tower Grove East, Fox Park, College Hill, and Hyde Park neighborhoods. She began her career with St. Louis Public School District in 1994. In her 24 years with St. Louis Public Schools, she has held four administrative positions and created dozens of programs and services to improve the quality of life for our neighborhoods, our children, and our families. Her focus has always been to empower people to engage in the community and school and to partner with them to improve their lives. Whereas when Bosnian immigrants came to the Bebo Mill neighborhood, Patrice was one of the first to reach out and offer classes in Bosnian at the community school. Patrice created ten counseling and character-building groups at Oak Hill School, individual counseling and therapeutic services for children and parents, and after-school soccer for kindergarten to third grade, parenting classes, community employment resources, fairs, English, GED, exercise and nutrition classes, gardening, and the list goes on and on. To create all these programs and services, Patrice has emphasized deep partnerships and collaboration with neighborhood leaders, school staff, families, and Aldermen. She has been and promises to continue to be our partner in creating stronger, more vibrant St. Louis. By the Board of Aldermen in the City of St. Louis, that we pause in our deliberations to applaud Patrice Crati for her tireless efforts and contribution to the City of St. Louis and wish her continued success, we direct the clerk of the Board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to further prepare a commemorative copy to that end, and it may be presented at a time and place here today. I also want to say that Patrice is the type of person, when she provides leadership, she knows when to let go. It isn't about her. It's about empowering the community and making things happen in the community, and she has been a stalwart in the Bebo area. Patrice, would you like to say something?
Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Thank you. Carol really said it all, and I'm very touched to be honored in this way by this body. It has been a pleasure to work with you, and I'm not going to stop. As Carol has alluded, I will continue to be your partner and work to create and improve our city. Thank you.
I just want to also just send my thanks and congratulations out on your retirement. But I know, Patrice, you are a hard worker, so I can't imagine you're actually retiring. That just means that you're going to spend more time doing a lot of these community things that you've done for so many years and have poured your heart into. This resolution is the highest honor the Board has to give any organization or individual. And what it does, it cements in time some of your many accomplishments up until this point in time. So 100, 200 years from now, when you research the records of the City of St. Louis, you will see the name Patrice Crati amongst those records and know that you've passed this way, and you made a significant contribution, so much so that we've added your name to our permanent records. Patrice, congratulations, and thank you for all that you've done to assist working families and kids all across our city to achieve more. So congratulations. Do you want to introduce who you have up here?
So, starting on my right, Jim Seheda, another community leader. Claire Winnicott, who's my spouse. Deborah Shapiro, a good friend and other community leader. And Carrie Coleman, another good friend and community leader.
And I think for Patrice, the best is yet to come. I don't think she's finished yet.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second and seconded by Alderman from the twenty-sixth that we adopt our Courtesy Resolutions Calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose. Motion carries. With that, we'll return to our regular order of business. Introduction of honored guests. Any introductions of honored guests. Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fellow members of the Board, I would like to introduce as my honored guest, Gretchen... There she is. Gretchen Waddell Barwick from the Sierra Club, as well as my son Lucas Navarro, who just graduated from eighth grade from St. Rock School and is here with me today. Thank you.
Any further introductions? Alderwoman from the fourteenth.
Mr. President and esteemed colleagues, I'd like to have as my honored guests Demetrius Alfred and Nathan Lett from Firefighters Local 73.
Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Board, I'd like to have my esteemed guest this morning, Mr. Dr. Kenneth Franklin with Metro.
Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh.
Mr. President, first let me recognize all the committee people that are in the City of St. Louis. Could you please stand, the committee people? Since I was a committee person, I want to make sure I recognize all of my committee people.
There you go.
And then I want to recognize Jeff Hans with the carpenters and Frederick Cersey with plumbing and pipe fitters.
Alderman from the seventh.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to have as my honored guest today Connie Johnson from the Treasurer's Office and the Seventh Ward Committee Man Marty Joe Murray. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board. All my guests today are from the Home Builders' Association. I have Celeste Reader, and we all know her because she's hiding out in the corner. We have Alex Scharf, and he's over there. And the best one, I get to introduce is Emily Post. I think that we need to watch our etiquette today. We got Emily Post here with us. Anyway, all from the home builders.
Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have today as my special guest my state representative, Mr. Bruce Franks, Jr.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? We also have with us today Sophia. Sophia is majoring in political science and finance, and she's interning with us this summer. Let's give her a round of applause. Welcome, Sophia. Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap us
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Board, we're gathered here on the first day of June 2018. It was on this day in 1869 that Thomas Edison invented the first electronic voting machine. And in 1925, when Lou Gehrig replaced Wally Pitt for the next 2,000 and some odd games. But more importantly, this is National Donut Day, and we do have the spokesman, the Alderman from the twenty-third. Mr. Donut himself is here. Apparently, he's not here. He's out eating donuts. Oh, there he is. Thank you. All right. Thank you, sir.
Approval of the minutes. Approval of the minutes, Mr. Clerk.
We have a minutes from the May 18th, 2018, and May 24th, 2018 minutes.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Board, I move that the minutes of the May 18th and 24th meetings be approved.
Been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth. Seconded by Alderman from the sixth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Reporter city officials.
Copies of the reports of city officials have been placed in all of the Alderman's mailboxes. Item 6A, Board Bills Number 46, 42, 43, and 44. Item 6B, Office of the Mayor. Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment and reappointment to the Sprinkler System Contractors Board of Examiners. The appointment of Ms. Susan Kankel, who resides in the Seventh Ward and whose term will expire on November 8th, 2020. The appointment of Mr. James Clifford, who resides in the Ninth Ward and whose term will expire on November 8th, 2020. I respectfully request your approval of the appointments.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize on the mayor's appointments to Sprinkler Systems Contractors Board.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Board, I move to approve the mayor's appointments.
Moved by Alderman from the seventh, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Crown Plaza Community Improvement District. The reappointment of Ms. Julie Baker, who is a property owner representative in the Seventh Ward and whose term will expire on June 15th, 2021. The reappointment of Ms. Dasha Pork, who is a property owner representative in the Seventh Ward and whose term will expire on June 15th, 2021. The reappointment of Ms. Glenda Lockard, who is a property owner representative in the Seventh Ward and whose term will expire on June 15th, 2021. I respectfully request your approval of the appointment.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Crown Plaza Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Board, I move to approve the mayor's appointments.
Moved by Alderman from the seventh, seconded by Alderman from the tenth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose. Motion carries.
Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Soulard Special Business District. The appointment of Mr. William S. Tomber, who resides in the Seventh Board and whose term will expire on December 31st, 2019. I respectfully request your approval of the appointment.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize on the mayor's appointments to the Soulard Special Business District.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Board, I move to approve the mayor's appointment.
Moved by Alderman from the seventh, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose. Motion carries.
Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment and reappointment to the Locust Central Special Business District Board. The reappointment of Mr. John H. Hayden, State Farm Insurance Agency, whose business is located in the Sixth Ward and whose term will expire on December 31st, 2019. The appointment of Ms. Daphne L. Moore, who resides in the Nineteenth Ward and whose term will expire on December 31st, 2020. I respectfully request your approval of the appointments.
Alderwoman from the nineteenth, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Locust Central Business District.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Board, I move that we accept the submission from the mayor's office for this.
Moved by Alderman from the nineteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose. Motion carries.
Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the 2017 Shoto Community Improvement District. The reappointment of Ms. Wendy Hamilton, who is a business property owner in the Sixth Ward and whose term will expire on September 2nd, 2021. The reappointment of Mr. Paul Hamilton, who is a business property owner in the Sixth Ward and whose term will expire September 2nd, 2021. The reappointment of Ms. Stacy N. Reinhardt, who is a property owner representative in the Sixth Ward and whose term will expire September 2nd, 2021. I respectfully request your approval of the appointments.
Alderwoman from the sixth, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the 2017 Shoto Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we accept the mayor's appointments.
Moved by Alderman from the sixth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose. Motion carries.
That is the extent of reports of city officials, Mr. President.
We will dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We would dispense with line items eight through 10. First reading
Board Bill 68, sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus, an ordinance to regulate employer and employee working relationships between the city and all employees under the classified service, including a compensation plan, terms and conditions of employment, benefits, leaves of absence, and authorization for deferred compensation plan, repealing ordinance 70285, allocating certain other employees to a grade with rate, and including an emergency clause. Board Bill Number 69, sponsored by Alderman Jeffrey Boyd, an ordinance recommended by the Parking Commission, making appropriation for payment of the operating expenses, capital equipment, and improvement expenses, including lease purchase agreements involving parking division assets and debt service expenses of the Parking Division of the Treasurer's Office, Keel and City Hall Parking Facilities, Information Technologies, Argyle Parking, Shoto Building and Parking Facility, Williams Paper Parking, Central Downtown Parking, Buckingham Parking, Couples Parking Facility, and Justice Parking Facility for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019, amounting in the aggregate to the sum of $16,221,902 and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number 70, sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro, an ordinance approved and recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment and the Board of Public Service, authorizing a First Amendment of the lease agreement authorized by Ordinance 63956 between the city and the Municipal Theater Association of St. Louis by amending Section 2, Term, Section 4, Other Consideration, A, Forest Park Improvements, and Exhibit C with an emergency provision. Board Bill 71, sponsored by Alderman Bacaro, an ordinance establishing a three-way stop site at the intersection of Purnod Avenue and Tedmar Avenue, regulating all traffic traveling eastbound and westbound on Purnod Avenue at Tedmar Avenue, and regulating all traffic traveling southbound on Tedmar Avenue and Purnod Avenue, and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of first reading of board bills, Mr. President.
Roughance to committee.
Public Employees, Board Bill Number 68. Streets Traffic and Refuge, Board Bill 69 and 71. Parks and Environment, Board Bill Number 70.
We will dispense with line item 13 and 14, perfection consent.
Board Bill Number 47, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets to change the 3200 block of Sullivan II from a one-way passage to a two-way passage and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number 49, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate traffic travel on the north side of Forest Park, 3745 through 3801 Forest Park. Board Bill Number 63, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets to make such changes in the present traffic pattern, controlling traffic on Greer, Dodier, and University in the 3500 block of said streets between North Grand and North Garrison, so that as reconfigured, the traffic pattern developed and in place as a result of the changes directed by this ordinance are as follows, namely, Greer 3500 block, traffic to flow two-way between North Grand and North Garrison. Dodier 3500 block, traffic to flow two-way between North Grand and North Garrison. University 3500 block, traffic to flow one-way southeast-east between North Grand and North Garrison. That is the extent of the perfection consent calendar, Mr. President.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the tenth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose. Motion carry. Dispense with line item 16, third reading consent.
Board Bill Number 27, sponsored by Alderman Moore, an ordinance repealing ordinance 70087 and in lieu thereof enacting a new ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any package or drink liquor licenses for any currently non-licensed premises within the boundaries of the Fourth Ward Liquor Control District and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number 2, sponsored by Alderwoman Martin, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property in City Block 3084 from J, Industrial District, and K, Unrestricted District, to the K, Unrestricted District only at the 7500 through 18 South blocks of South Broadway and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number 3, sponsored by Alderman Volmer, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property in City Block 4741 from A, Single Family Dwelling District, and F, Neighborhood Commercial District, to the A, Single Family Dwelling District only at 5201 filer and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number 41, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, an ordinance to provide for the borrowing of funds in anticipation of the collection of tax payments levied by the city for deposit in its General Revenue Fund for the calendar year ending December 31st, 2018, and remaining uncollected, and other revenues remaining to be collected and deposited in the General Revenue Fund for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019. All such revenues for the General Revenue Fund in the Treasury of the city through the issuance by the city of its tax and revenue anticipation notes and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number 45, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller, owner and operator of Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute the Airport Terminal Services Inc. Space Permit AL-071 between the city and airport terminal services, granting to the permit to certain rights and privileges in connection with the occupancy and use of the premises, containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of the third reading consent calendar, Mr. President.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for adoption of the third reading consent calendar. calendar.
Move by the Alderman from the eighteenth, second by the Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman, Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Codar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Bacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Rice. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Boyd. You have twenty-four aye votes, Mr. President.
By vote, staying the motion, Alderman from the eighteenth, and third read, and finally passed the aforementioned bills. Third reading, report of engrossments.
Board Bill, Board Bill number thirty-seven AA, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, an ordinance pertaining to the authorization of a mutual aid agreement between the city and St. Clair County, Illinois, for St. Clair County, Illinois law enforcement officer, employees to provide law enforcement services and activities on MetroLink property within the city limits, containing definitions, a separability clause, and an emergency clause. Board Bill thirty-five AA, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderwoman Navarro, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Martin, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Rice, and Alderwoman Howard, an ordinance pertaining to campaign contribution limits, amending ordinance seven zero three five seven, sections one and three, and repealing section four of said ordinance to acknowledge newly passed state of Missouri maximum limits on campaign contributions and to decrease maximum limits.
All right, Mr. Clerk, you were going so well, I didn't want to stop you. You have to go back to thirty-seven, uh, AA, and we had, these all are individually.
I'm sorry.
Oh, it's all right. Thirty-seven AA, just me, just read that one.
Okay. Board Bill thirty-seven AA, an ordinance pertaining to the authorization of a mutual aid agreement between the city and St. Clair County, Illinois, for St. Clair County, Illinois law enforcement officers, employees to provide law enforcement services and activities on MetroLink property within the city limits, containing definitions, a separability clause, and an emergency clause.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on third reading, final passage of Board Bill thirty-seven as amended.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption, third reading and final passage of Board Bill thirty-seven as amended.
Move by the Alderman from the eighteenth, uh, second it by, Alderman from the twenty-second. Please proceed, Alderman. Any further discussion, any further discussion? It's been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, second by Alderman from the twenty-second that we, third read and final pass, Board Bill thirty-seven as amended. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Codar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alder, Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Bacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Twenty-three aye votes, Mr. President, zero no votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the eighteenth, and third read, and finally pass Board Bill thirty-seven as amended.
Board Bill thirty-five as amended, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderwoman Navarro, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Martin, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Rice, and Alderwoman Howard, an ordinance pertaining to campaign contribution limits, amending ordinance seven zero three five seven, sections one and three, and repealing section four of said ordinance to acknowledge newly passed state of Missouri maximum limits on campaign contributions and to decrease maximum limits on campaign contributions for local elections as provided herein.
Alderwoman from the twentieth, you recognize on third reading, the final passage of Board Bill thirty-five as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move for final passage, and third reading, final passage of Board Bill thirty-five as amended.
Move by all from the twentieth, second by all from the twelfth. Any discussion? Been moved and seconded that we, third read and final pass, Board Bill thirty-five as amended. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Codar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Bacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone.
Please continue with the roll call.
Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Bacaro. Twenty-three aye votes and one present, Mr. President.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderwoman from the twentieth, and third read, and finally pass Board Bill thirty-five as amended. Mr. Clerk, as a note, uh, when you're doing the roll call, uh, if anyone raises a question, you are not answering questions, you continue on the roll, because that is the rules. Report of enrollment committee.
Board Bill number twenty-seven, number two, number three, number forty-one, forty-five, thirty-seven as amended, and thirty-five as amended.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session fix his signature here to today and that these may become law. We dispense with line item twenty-one, second reading of resolutions.
The reappointment to the Residence Inn Dutchtown Community Improvement District of Janessa A. Corpus, Ashley Henderson, Corey Hodge, and Laura Lashley.
Alderwoman from the sixth, you recognize on, uh, mayor's appointment to the Residence Inn Downtown Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that we accept the mayor's appointments.
Move by Alderman from the sixth, entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the ninth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Miss Lane, some unfinished business.
We have none, Mr. President.
Announcements.
Saturday, June second, the Ways and Means Committee will meet at the Downtown Central Library at ten AM in the training room. On Wednesday, June sixth, the, uh, the Housing and Urban Development and Zoning Committee will meet. And on Friday, June eighth, the board will meet at ten AM in chambers. That is the extent of announcements, Mr. President.
Any further, Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to also announce the Ways and Means will be meeting Monday, ten AM. Uh, we'll be doing our cuts in addition, so just want to kind of remind all the members to be there, we need a quorum, it's important, it's time sensitive, so we can get it over to Board V and A, then it has to come back and go back again, so, we only have three weeks, so we want to get the budget done, so real time sensitive, just want all the members to be there so we can go ahead and get that done. Also wanted to announce, State Representative and resident of the twenty-sixth ward, uh, Carla May, she's right there. She's my special guest today, thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the tenth.
Hello, 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 thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Next Sunday, not this Sunday, but June tenth, will be the annual JC Soapbox Derby on the hill at Mackland Avenue Botanical, right where Shaw Schools, there's an antique car show, there'll be food, beverage, uh, live music, and watch the kids who'll try and get a, a chance to go to Ohio for the finals, so next Sunday, June tenth, is the Soapbox Derby. Also like to announce that Dave Sweeney's Closet is open, the Alderman from the seventh and myself were in it last week, he's selling off his grade school clothes, if you'd like to buy any, thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to announce that there's a Streets Traffic and Refuge Committee hearing for next Tuesday in the Leash Room at nine AM. And wasn't sure if the Alderman from the twenty-sixth wanted to talk about Ways and Means, it's listed under announcements tomorrow at ten o'clock.
Mr. Clerk, please make note of that and, um, have a conversation with the, uh, committee chairman. Alderwoman from the fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, uh, today is Wear Orange Day for gun violence awareness, and tomorrow in Tower Grove Park, I invite everybody to join us at three PM for Moms Demand Action, is doing a rally, uh, an event for their annual Wear Orange Day, so I hope folks will come out from three to five PM at the Step Center in Tower Grove Park.
Alderman from the third.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. President, we had our camping event this weekend, I just wanted to say that it went amazing, and thank all of the people who were involved, thank you Lisa Middlebrook, we appreciate Dan Gunther coming out, we had, uh, Judge Edwards come out, uh, and speak to the kids, we, we, it was, it was a really great time, we had over fifty-two, uh, children out there, um, unfortunately only had about five fathers, but, uh, it was really, really awesome, they had a great time, I want to thank Lou Hamilton for helping out, we also want to thank the Kelly Group, um, various churches helped out also, the Lumiere Casino came through, they gave us, uh, food and chicken, uh, we also, fish and chicken, I'm sorry, we also gutted, uh, well, I gutted my first fish this weekend and got to cook it and eat it, and all the kids did also, we had fifty kids catch their first fish this weekend, so.
Wow.
Um, we had a really amazing time, so I just wanted to thank everybody for, you know, helping out, thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you. Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, members of the board, uh, I wanted to have, uh, an opportunity to talk about the, uh, Urban League Salute to Women, that event is June Friday, June fifteenth, at the Marriott Hotel, starts at five thirty PM, some tickets are still available, uh, as you know, we try to recognize women who have, uh, volunteered their services and are, have had, uh, roles in, uh, working in various positions around this region, but also outside of this region as well, so the lineup for this year is Shirley Caesar, Kathy Hughes from Radio and TV One, Martha, uh, from Martha and the Vandellas, all of the international presidents of the sororities, so of course we're talking about the deltas, the sigmas, the zetas, uh, they'll all be represented as well, plus we have several women who have volunteered in schools for a number of years, and to me, that's the greatest thing that you could do, is to help young people move forward, so I'm excited about this event, the entertainment, a full concert by Levert, so I hope that people have an opportunity to come and support the Urban League, that serves over a hundred and ten thousand people annually, from everything you can think of, to homelessness, to getting a job, so, uh, try to support it, and even if you can't buy a ticket, send a donation, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements, any further announcements? Uh, also just a reminder, the Sunshine Law Presentation will be held today at one PM in the Kennedy Room, again, one PM in the Kennedy Room for an update on the Sunshine Law, so you can get, ask any questions you may have of, uh, some of the professionals, any, again, any, any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the Alderman from the first, fourth, fifth, and thirteenth be excused for necessary absence.
Move by Alderman from the eighteenth, entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the fifteenth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the board adjourns until Friday, June eighth, ten AM.
Move by Alderman from the eighteenth, second by Alderman from the tenth and the twenty-fifth. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, stand and adjourn.